Good evening. We apologize for that minor technological delay. I'd like to announce the establishment of a forum called January 28, 2025 Work Session in Businessfield to order at this evening's meeting. Board member Ebony Tally Brain is not present. At this time, if you so choose, please join us in a moment of silence.
Thank you. Excuse me. I'd like to just welcome everyone here and this is kind of first full week of school after Christmas vacation, so welcome back again. And hopefully everyone will have an exciting and profitable, memorable, and meaningful second semester. Vice Chair Sims, you have some updates on?
Yes. Good evening to everyone and welcome to the meeting. For sports, we would like to say for the Warren County Middle School Warriors, they're in action this week. They will play Thursday at home. It will be eighth grade recognition night, so please come and join the Warriors. Ladies tip off at 4:30 followed by the guys, so please come out and support them and support the eighth graders. Warren County High School basketball, we had a great weekend in the NIST. Our JV guys, varsity girls, and varsity boys, guys all won Friday night against the Weldon Chargers.
That's right.
We then had the county line clash on Saturday against the Vance County Vikings, Pipers. And if you came to the game, if you came by the time of the varsity game, you couldn't get in, that's how many people were in the NIST this weekend. So we had a full house and we were excited. We were victorious with the JV boys and the varsity boys. Girls came up a little short, but they fought hard and needless to say. This week, we have three games and they're all on the road. They will be playing North Edge Cone in Tarboro. They'll be playing Kip Pride in Halifax on Thursday, and then Friday they'll be at Southeast Halifax. All games are the girls. The JV will start at 4:30, the girls at 6:00, and the varsity boys at 7:30. So please join all of our teams this week and support them, both middle school and high school basketball.
Thank you.
I would like to just give an update on the battle of the band schedule. First of all, I just would like to welcome you. Thank you for coming and hello, everybody. Mark your calendars now and save the date. The Warren County High School Drum Line Competition and Battle of the Bands will be on April the 26, 2025. You don't want to miss this. They have more drum lines, more bands, and more fun than last year's battle. Tickets are $10. Get your tickets now before they sell out. Link to purchase tickets on the Warren County High School Division of the Bands Facebook page, so please look on the Facebook page of the Division of the Bands and get your tickets. And again, thank you for coming and so glad to see such a crowd. Thank you.
I don't have an announcement, but I'm so glad that we have this large crowd this evening. All of you look beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Monica U. Davis.
Good evening. Boy, this is a record here, having a house full. And so we're so excited to be able to recognize some of your great achievements later on this evening. This is the way to get you out to our meeting, is to celebrate the children. It's all about the children. Yeah, yeah, yeah. We want to say that we had our, I want to commend our principals, our teachers, students, and family for the pivot last week to remote learning during our winter storm. So this was the first time we've gone remote since COVID, the pandemic. And we had a very short presentation later in the meeting, but we want to just personally say how impressed I was and the staff was with how well the remote learning day went. How did you like it, students? Was it okay? Come on, can't you say something? Talk back to me. I see some head nodding and all. Okay. We also getting ready to, congratulations to all our high school students on our honor roll for second term. Warren County High School will be honoring their students with an award ceremony tomorrow, and the Early College will post their student's name on the website and the social media chatter. We had a successful town hall meeting last week with our senior leadership and some of the board members came and it was hosted by the voices of Warren County. We have some recognitions tonight and we're excited to recognize several groups in just a few moments. But other noteworthy things to remember is February is Black History Month and CTE Month, Career and Technical Education, and we'll be celebrating things all during that week. Next week is also National School Counsel's Week, February the 3rd through the 7th, and then February the 10th through the 14th is Love the Bus Week. So we're gonna love and appreciate our bus drivers during the week of February the 10th through the 14th. I think at this time, I'll wait till special recognition to do my other part. I'm finished.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Monica U. Davis. So at this point, we'll begin our special recognition, which makes this a special evening, and so Dr. Carrington, if you will do the honors.
Good evening, Chair Lehman, Vice Chair Sims, Interim Superintendent Dr. Monica U. Davis, board members, those present and those watching online. We are so excited tonight to recognize some of our student athletes. They have made some great accomplishments. And so first, definitely want to say that we do know that we do have an away basketball game tonight for the high school, so some of those students are not present tonight. We're going to recognize those who are here. So first, we're going to start with our Warren County High School cross-country all-conference team members. So let's give it up for them. Okay, all right. So I'm gonna call them. So I'm gonna call their names, give them the recognition if you're here, just come forward. Taquan Davis, Tony Henderson, Jeremiah Kearney, Keishon Austin, O'Leah Butler, Beatrice Madeira, Inaya Smith, Destiny Freeman, Kenley Sheets, and Kamaya Rudd. That's basketball team, all right. That's right. Also, our Warren County High School volleyball team made some records this school year. Mariah Harris, basketball. Amari Freeman and Zakaya Macklin. All right, we have athletes all around. All right, our Warren County High School football team. I know we have some of them here tonight. Javion Fields, Joelle Bryant, Damonte Hawkins. Come on up. Makai Chavis, Amir Gamble. All right, let's give it up for those teams.
How you turn this phone on? How you turn the phone on?
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Can I turn it off from there?
Next, we'll recognize the Warren County Middle School volleyball players, and definitely want to recognize their head coach, Sheila Miles, and assistant coach Marvin Shirley. Our volleyball players at the middle school had a fantastic season this year. All right, so we're gonna recognize them. Sarah Boyd, Samaya Burgett. Janice Davis. Brooklyn Frye. Serenity Harris. Sierra Howard. Zayn Kearney. Zeta King. Navea Lynch. Zalea Lynch. Salima Madeira. Leah Powell. Gabriella Romero. Seranti Vasquas. And Avery Williams. And coaches, y'all, you will can join them as well. Coach Miles and Coach Shirley.
I think the last two didn't, but it's okay. Oh, okay.
Congratulations.
Why you covering your smile? Congratulations. You can't see her, she behind me.
Yes. And also tonight, we are so honored to recognize some students from Warren County that have been selected to participate in the third annual Vance Granville Community College Honor Band. And we have students from the middle school, the high school, and early college. Leila Jones from Warren County Middle, clarinet. Takara Williams, middle school. Leah Powell. Leah Powell plays the clarinet. Micah Richardson, alto sax. Ada Richardson, trombone. Kamari Chandler, tuba. Sidney Downey, percussion. Kyran Green, percussion. From Warren County High School, Nikiba Harris flute. Madison Fogg, clarinet. Alasia Faison, clarinet. Next, Emily Gregoria, alto sax. Jaden Sharon, trumpet. Ajene Andrews, trumpet. Devin Palmer, trombone. Alexis Taylor, trombone. From Warren Early College High School, Danielle Andrews, alto sax. Summer Murphy, trumpet. And Juan Reed, percussion. And band director, Mr. Jason Pender and Sharita Smith. And definitely would like to let out those that are watching and hearing know that the Vance Granville Honor Band concert is scheduled for February the 7th at 6:30 PM in the Civic Center auditorium on the campus of Vance Granville on the Henderson campus. So February the 7th at 6:30 PM. Let's go out and support our Honor Band students.
Say good evening to Chair Lehman, Vice Chair Sims, Dr. Monica U. Davis, board members. So tonight, we're gonna recognize some of our teachers for their EVOs performance. And so pursuant to North Carolina Session Law 2017-57 and Session Law 2018-5, the General Assembly continues to do the teacher bonus program based on the 2324 EVOs data. There are three categories of bonuses for which a teacher may be eligible, third grade reading, fourth through fifth grade reading, and fourth through eighth grade mathematics. And so we're gonna recognize some teachers on tonight. I will read what one of the certificates says. It says that Warren County Board of Education appreciates your dedication, hard work, and commitment to the teaching profession. This certificate is presented in recognition of your EVOs performance as one of the top 25% of teachers in Warren County schools, or it may also read in the state of North Carolina for whatever your content area is. So our first... So our first honoree is Ms. Hazel Ordonis. And she's recognized for third grade reading for Warren County Schools. And Ms. Ordonis is one of the top 25% of teachers in our district for her performance. Next, we'll recognize Mr. Louis Olita for grade four reading for Warren County Schools. So Ms. Ordonis is Northside Elementary, Mr. Olita Marion Boyd Elementary. Next, we'll be recognizing Ms. Notoria Henry for grade five reading as one of the top 25% of teachers in Warren County Schools at Bone Elementary. And last but certainly not least, we have Ms. Johanna Sierra who's being recognized for three categories, grade five math for top 25% for the state of North Carolina, grade four math for being in the top 25% of teachers in North Carolina, and also grade four math being in the top 25% grade four math for Warren County Schools. Fantastic, Northside Elementary. So each category, each category of recognition is accompanied by a bonus. Want to give a huge shout out to Ms. Donna Robinson and Mr. Nathan Squire, who will be making sure that we get those out on Friday, so you'll be super excited. Ms. Sierra, unfortunately, you maxed out, you're going to get two bonuses per the state allotment, but you should be happy about that. We're super proud of you, keep up the good work, thank you so much.
Congratulations, so proud of you.
So proud of you. Congratulations. Thank you for all you do. Thank you for all you do. Thank you for all you do. Congratulations, thank you for all you do.
Okay, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
At this time, we're going to recognize our district's science fair winners. So I'm going to ask Mr. Hurl to come up to assist me with this. Come on up, Mr. Hurl.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
One of the things is, is that when you're dealing with STEM, it is a wonderful thing to behold. We are in the midst of revolutionary things happening in the fields of STEM. I had a friend of mine send me a video of two monkeys playing the guitar, and it looks exactly like they were playing the guitar, you know. And I said, my God, wow, these monkeys have been trained to do some wonderful things. Then I remembered AI, that wonderful thing called artificial intelligence that has taken over and it's developing so quickly that every month, we get to see more and more improvements, and it's getting to the point where you can't tell what's real and what's fake. And so, we're going to have to become more aware as students, as parents, as educators, to begin to understand and recognize, and how to recognize what is real and what is fake. It was wonderful this year to be able to host the district-wide science and engineering fair over at the high school. And all of these winners that I'm going to name are eligible to move on to the North Carolina 3A regional event, which will be taking place in February, I believe the first Saturday in February. And that gives them the opportunity to see projects from other areas in the region. They can see their shortfalls and they can see their strengths. And that is the key, to being able to learn not only from our teachers, but from other students from other areas in the region of the state. Our third grade winner from Marion Boyd, Bria Pulli. Okay, all right. And a round note, our elementary, Marion Boyd, Representative Jaris Kearney. He's not here. And then we moved on to Warren County Middle School. We have about numerous winners there. Our first winners representing biology, Amira Steed and Kira Cunningham. Representing chemistry, Mary Ann Agalar. Representing earth and environmental sciences, Kennedy Sulivan. Engineering and robotics, Reagan Eastwood. And before I announce the high school, normally I work as an independent, I'm by myself over there at the high school usually, but I have to give recognition to Dr. Landis and Mrs. Agalar, who did such a wonderful job in the presentation of that science fair, Science and Engineering Fair. Representing Warren County High School, Mayana Burgess, Janaya Good, Nomone Williams. Representing physics, the effectiveness of different materials in blocking UVB rays. Not here, I'm assuming that they must be at the basketball. Warren Early College, representing bioscience level A, Carmen Hayes. Early College, bioscience B, Dana Garcia. I'm going to try to pronounce it, Cazares. Not here. Once again, Early College, chemistry, Amir Hill. Representing earth and environmental sciences, Ayana Harley. Last one, representing engineering from Warren Early College High School, Shaera Saldo.
Thank you all for coming. Thank you. All right. Be safe.
Well, we have one more recognition that I want to recognize. January is School Board Appreciation Month in North Carolina. School Board members play a vital role in our community, our schools throughout the state. They spend countless hours of their time and talent towards the achievement of public education. They are extraordinary people who tackle the enormous job of governing the school district, and their actions and decisions affected the present and future of our children. Board member continues hundreds of hours each year leading the district, wherever is crafting policies, high and top-notch administrator, listening to staff and students' concerns, and recognizing outstanding programs. Board members always keep their eye on the goal, and that is student achievement. Many school board members are facing unpredictable challenges, yet to continue to work with stakeholders to ensure a bright future for our children. Warren County Schools thanks our school board members for their hard work and commitment to improving outcomes for their students throughout the county. Their service ensures that decisions about local, public schools are made by those more familiar with the needs of the community children are served. School board members deserve recognition, appreciation, and thank you for their dedication to North Carolina's most precious commodities, which is our students. And I just want to say, on behalf of the Warren County Schools, our district, our staff, our parents, our principals, and all, we want to extend our sincere gratitude for the esteemed school board members that are unwavering commitments to our students, staff, and community. Your dedication is providing a high-quality education for all of our students is truly inspiring. We appreciate your leadership and guidance in navigating the complex challenges and celebrating the success of our district. Your timeless effort in advocating the needs for our students and ensuring that they have resources to succeed. Your insightful discussions that continues to inform and effect the decision-making, but your unwavering support for public education and the well-being of our entire school community. Your services, your service is invaluable, and we are deeply appreciated for your contribution. So tribute to our school board, we have a PowerPoint.
I have long hair and short hair.
Thank you for what you do every day for educating our students in our Warren County system. We could not do it without your dedication, your commitment, and your support. Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, that was a lot, and as I'm looking at this, I do agree with North Carolina's most precious commodity is our children, and so it's our honor to serve. Thank you. All right, public comments, we're going to just whisk right by that one, because we have none tonight. So here we are at our work session to do the work, which is to discuss the upcoming items. So the first one is our.
Inclimate weather remote.
I believe the agenda was not approved.
Oh, what do I, I have to do.
You can just go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, I got too excited. Thank you. And you would think I would have it the way I outline this. I got it now, it's over here. Oh, there, I've crossed it out already.
In her mind, she did.
There lies the problem. Okay, at this point, I'd like to have a motion to approve the January 28th, 2025 work session business meeting agenda.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the January 28th, 2025 work session business meeting agenda.
So I have a motion by Board Member Long and a second by Board Member Bird that we approve the January 28th, 2025 work session business meeting agenda. If there's no further discussion, may we vote? As well as with the voting sound of a aye. Aye, that motion carries, and again, my apologies for skipping over that. All right, discussion item number one, inclement weather remote learning plan, Mr. Jones.
Good evening, Board Chair Lehman, Vice Chair Sims, board members, Dr. Davis. At this time, I'm going to share with you the Inclimate Weather Remote Learning Plan. Just some background information on that, our team at the district level, we got together, we had several members of our departments to get together and develop this plan. So we worked really, really hard on this plan. We shared it with our teachers, and then we talked with our principals at the same time, and they gave their input as well on the remote learning plan. According to North Carolina State Law, each school district is awarded or allowed to have at least five remote days. The benefit of having these remote days, we can continue to support our students with their instruction and learning, reduce the number of makeup days, and increase the likelihood of maintaining our spring break, which everybody should be smiling, and ending the school year as planned. So when you look at our plan, we broke it down based on grade spans, so you can see pre-K information. The next two slides, you're going to see kindergarten through eighth grade, and then ninth grade through 12th grade. So when you look at the slides, you're going to see on the left side what the teachers should be doing, and on the right side, what the students should be doing during our remote day. So you can see with the pre-K, our students are required to complete their packets. With the teachers, the teachers are required to pretty much be on call, and you can see the various methods that we're using there from 9 to 3:30. We're encouraging, the teachers are encouraging their families to take pictures, to share their evidence of completion of work. to share their evidence of completion of work. As far as the students, we're asking them to have their work completed. We've given them five days to return their work, and that's how we're going to complete or account for their attendance. When you look at K through 8, I'm just going to point out the difference there. With K through 8th grade, we're requiring our teachers to have Google Classrooms. It's a feature in Google Classroom that the students can go offline, so they can actually download their work from school, just say they don't have internet access. They can complete their assignments. Once they have internet access, the work will pretty much be uploaded. Okay? We're requiring our teachers to be on call from 9 to 10 o'clock, and then from 1 to 2 o'clock, and you can see the methods that we're requiring them to use, Google Meet. Again, the same thing, as far as completion of the work, they have five days, and that will count their attendance. Next line. When you look at 9 through 12, the only difference there is actually the community college, because we have some students that are actually taking courses at the community college. There, they have to get in contact with their instructors and find out their assignments and how they're going to record their daily attendance. All right? That is our remote learning plan. Any questions? Thank you.
Also, this is posted on our website, our system website, I think also the school's website? So, you can look at it in details, and we've already had two days of it, so we know, the parents probably know how it works better than we do. So, we do want to thank you, parents, for getting your students involved while we were on remote learning and you being their teachers at that time. So, if you have questions or concern on how it works, please feel free to reach out to us so we can make some adjustments. Start with your principal, your level principal first, and then they will pass those suggestions on to us, how we can make it better if we need to do anything. Thank you so much.
All right, so the next discussion item is the 2025-2026 school calendar discussion. Presenting right now, Ms. Deborah Clayton.
I just want to do a little precursor before we get started. This is not about presenting our calendar of dates and holidays for next year. It's not about that. Right now, as a system, we're on two calendars. And we have a secondary calendar. So, this tonight is looking at how maybe we could proceed. Are we good?
That was, I had my mic on my scarf, and I took my scarf off. I apologize. Strike two.
You have one more.
One more, I'm out.
Get myself together and come back to the conversation. We're trying to decide, you know, we want a discussion tonight about maybe looking at one calendar, because with, I've heard from some parents and some community people that it might be a little difficult having two calendars in a small system. So, we want to just share with you tonight what the rules are in the law about calendars. So, I'm going to have Ms. Clayton to get started on the presentation.
Good evening, everyone. As Dr. M.D. said, she wanted me to share with you calendar law, which for probably about, I guess, the last eight years I have been Chair of the Calendar Committee for Warren County Schools. So, I've become quite familiar with this, and I always have a very good committee to work with. And we are in the process of working on the calendar for the next school year, and we hope to maybe even possibly have a calendar for '26-'27 also. But for calendar law, we have to have 185 instructional days or a minimum of 1,025 instructional hours. So, you heard Mr. Jones refer to not having to do makeup days and not losing instructional hours. So, what we try to do when we're doing our calendars, we look at each school and the bell schedule. Our Infinite Campus Coordinator does that and has a spreadsheet, so that we like to bank about five to six days' worth of hours for each school in addition to the 1,025. That way, if we have an early release due to weather, or if we come late due to weather, or if we have to miss a day due to weather, then we can shave off on those banked hours. And, because we don't want to get down to the nitty-gritty and have to change a bell schedule or do some makeup hours. And like Dr. M.D. said and Mr. Jones said, that's why we have the remote learning also, because that helps us in losing, it helps keep us from losing those hours. So, in addition to the instructional time, the teachers have 11 holidays. They have 10 annual leave days and at least nine work days, and two of them have to be optional. Well, the work days will depend on the number of instructional days, plus the holidays, plus the annual leave days, plus your work days, which equals 215 days, because teachers have to be paid 215 for 215 days. So, if the students only come 175 days, you're going to have more work days than if the students come 180 days. Okay? So, the traditional calendar, with that, the students can start no earlier than the Monday closest to August 26, and they must end no later than the Friday closest to June 11. And that is what we have been doing with our traditional calendar. Is there a next one?
Next.
Now, we have five of our six schools that have calendar flexibility. Warren Early College has calendar flexibility because they are a cooperative innovative high school, and we have four restart schools that have calendar flexibility. Warren County High School, Warren County Middle School, Northside Elementary, and Marion Boyd Elementary. So, five out of six of our schools can technically start early. We have one school, Vaughn Elementary, which is not a restart school, and of course, it's not a high school that does not have calendar flexibility. They are considered a traditional high school. And I think at this point, this is when Dr. M.D. wanted some discussion regarding this item.
So, we have four schools, well, five schools that already can move on an early schedule and not away from the traditional schedule. So, we have one school, which is Vaughn Elementary School, that is out, that cannot, has to be on the traditional schedule. So, with the calendar law, we don't have the right to change Vaughn Elementary School. Correct, Attorney?
That is correct.
Do you want to add anything else to that?
Sure. I'll just clarify that the law does not, it just doesn't even apply to the restart schools and to the early college. There is a good cause exemption. That is specifically defined in the statute as schools that were closed for eight days during a year during any of the four last years because of severe weather, energy shortages, power failures, or other emergency situations. So, that is the only reason in the statute that DPI could grant an earlier start date, and even then, they can only go as early as August 19.
So, we could not apply for a waiver and just say that we have one school that cannot go on an early calendar? So, you don't think, they don't even have the right to grant that waiver?
So, under the language of the statute, DPI does not have authority to permit schools to start earlier than the Monday closest to the 26, except in those, the specific list of good cause exceptions. The legislature hasn't given that authority.
So, I guess I was going to ask to apply for a waiver, but it doesn't even look like it's worth doing, because they cannot give it to us?
I would be happy to discuss further potentially in closed session.
Okay.
But that is the language of the statute as written.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions, Board Members? Our purpose tonight was really to bring the law to the front for parents who are watching, so they would know that we're doing what we can to keep one schedule moving in order to see that we're not trying to separate the calendars. And so, my purpose tonight for the discussion for parents who are watching to know that sometimes your hands are tied by law, and you have to move forward with what you have. And so, that was the purpose. And if you have any more questions, being transparent, instead of just saying, "You've got two calendars out there, and you're not thinking about the families," but we are, is the law is kind of like holding us a little bit in a bind. And if any parents watching or have questions, please reach out to us, and we'll be able to direct you to where the statute is found.
Just for a point of clarity, the reason we want the restart schools, which have that classification as a restart school, to be able to start early is to be able, for the high school to be able to take their end-of-course subjects before we leave for winter break. Is that correct?
Correct. Warren County High School, being a restart school, has came back this year with Warren Early College, and they have semester EOCs. And like Chairman Lehman was saying, that it allows those students to take their EOCs before Christmas break. When they come back, and in the past, there have been years that they came back on the August or around the August 26 date, and then they have to take their EOCs in January. So, they would come back for about two weeks, they'd have close to a two-week break, come back for two weeks, and then they would have to take their EOCs. And then it would be about mid-January, right around the Martin Luther King holiday, right after that, that they would start their second semester.
And this year, it worked out, because with the weather coming back in January, if we had to take tests, we'd have been still trying to find some testing days in there, but by taking them before we went home for Christmas, it worked out. I also want to say that the middle school is also on the secondary calendar. It was. Because, only reason why the middle school started two weeks later this year was because we had roof problems, and so we had to move their start date back.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That is correct. They were on the, it was a secondary calendar. When we approved the calendar, I think it was in May of 2024, April or May of 2024, and Warren County Middle School was on the secondary calendar. If you remember, Ms. Mallard had done several surveys with our stakeholders, with the teachers, and staff, and students, and all, and that had been, was the decision. And then when we had the hurricane in August and the problems with the roof here at Warren County Middle School, we had to amend the calendar to the high school calendars, the high school's calendar, and then a K-8 calendar.
So, not to stir this up, but I'm just thinking. So, if they're just, how many courses are, how many tests are given in December? Because, to your point, the middle school was on the traditional calendar until there was the hurricane. So, if it is important to the community to have one calendar, what if all of the schools were on the traditional calendar, and there were just no courses tested the first semester? Because that's just ninth-grade math and 10th-grade English.
But then you're changing your whole master schedule, and you're putting all of the testing in.
Well, my point is how important it is to the community members that we have one schedule. And I'm just looking at how would that, is there a way to make that happen? And that is a possibility.
Well, Warren Early College
Would not be on it.
Well, Warren Early College is on a separate thing anyway. They've always been, they started on their own when we were on a traditional. I'm just saying, we just, this is probably really a committee question.
I think so.
You know?
I think that would be, I think that we would want to give some feedback from the school that is affecting.
Right.
And I would think that
I'm just throwing stuff out there.
It would be a high, it would be feedback from the high school, and probably feedback from the middle school, because maybe the middle school want to stay on a K-8 schedule or calendar. I don't know, but that would be where we would have to get some feedback from.
Right.
I think it's a valid question.
Right.
It's a valid question.
I just want the community to know how difficult it is to get to one schedule. In theory, it's a great idea. It's really difficult to make it happen. That's my point.
Okay, I think we accomplished what we wanted to tonight, was really explain what the law is. And so, if there are questions out there, being transparent about here the, I guess you call them bumps, that you have to pass over in order to get some things done.
And I think one of the things, I know when we've talked about the two different schedules, that a lot of parents or the community's been concerned about is spring break. And I think, I think if we can work that out for the most part, that helps with the happening of two calendars. I would love to see one calendar as well. I mean, we were, most of us were here when we had three calendars. So, I would love to see one, but if we can't have one because of legal and the general statute, then maybe if we can keep the spring break together, that might would help with some of the concerns.
The committee is really working hard on that.
Right, we have been.
I think we even found some ways that we could tie the spring break into the break at Vans Graham.
Right. Dr. M.D. and I have met and discussed that, and I'll be presenting to the calendar committee tomorrow. I guess you still want us to meet tomorrow?
Yes.
And you remember, Ms. Sims, that this past year, when we approved this calendar for the current school year, 24-25 school year, that we were all on the same spring break, which will be in March this year, the second full week of March.
So, that was one thing that they were looking at, just in case we had to. That's probably one of the biggest concerns.
I agree.
I think that's one of the biggest.
It is.
Thank you, Ms. Clayton. Excellent job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Whitaker, Board of Education meeting location.
Good evening, Chair Lehman, Vice Chair Sims, Board Member Ms. Long, Board Member Ms. Bird, Dr. Monique Davis, our viewers that are in the audience, and as well as those that are online. So, tonight for discussion item, we are proposing the discussion of the change or moving location from our Board of Education meetings being at Warren County Middle School to the Warren County Schools auxiliary building, which is the former New Tech campus. And so, that is what we're proposing at this time for discussion. Some of the rationale is so that we can maximize the use of the facility until construction starts. As far as setup and break now, everything that you see here in preparation for the meeting has to be set up and also taken down, and sometimes we have classes that are taking place in this space. Also, as we have to store items, we wanted to store those items safely and neatly. And so, that's why we're proposing, just some of the reasons why we are proposing a change in location, and also maximizing that site for other committee meetings, as well as professional development activities as well. And so, we wanted to share that information with the Board for discussion, as well as our stakeholders. And I'll open it for any comments or questions at this time.
Well, personally, I think it's a great idea. It sure is more reasonable to do that, in my opinion.
So, since it's in the policy, we will be amending the policy?
So, that's going to come up. Thank you, Vice Chair Sims, for that comment. So, that I'll be going into that on the next item, if you guys, okay? So, the policy is for information on tonight, just so I can review it with you all, is you don't have, it's not to take action on it, it's just for discussion only. And so, what we have is the policy draft, and in our current policy, our meeting location is included in the policy. So, as we researched various policies, Dr. Monique Davis, Ms. Pettaway, myself, and looking at other districts, we do not have to include the location in the policy itself. Our schedule that we have available to the public includes those predetermined dates, and also would include that predetermined location. And so, I redlined it and I included in our comments so that you all could see the rationale for us wanting to strike that section out. And then the additional update that we wanted to bring to you all's attention in this work session is that our current policy reads, if we go to that next page for specially called meetings, it says that specially called meetings may be scheduled in between meetings, it says that specially called meetings may be scheduled in between regular meetings of the board. It says work sessions, retreats, and public hearings are specific types of specially called meetings. And so at the present moment, we're having regularly board meetings on the second and the fourth Tuesday. And typically, our fourth Tuesday is considered a work session. But the way that our current policy reads is that our work sessions fall under the specially called meetings, meaning that we only have those when you all feel that you need to have a work session. So as we are revising this policy, and you guys have done great work with that, we saw this and we wanted to bring it to your attention so that there's a revision that needs to take place, that you all will have the information in advance before having to take action on it. At this time, I'm opening up for any comments or questions or discussion.
I'm thinking of the pros and cons, and I would imagine Mr. Powell could speak to the pros, right? And I don't know if he wants to. The cons, the only thing I can see is how big is the largest space and how accommodating is that space to the public? Because that's why we moved from the conference room with central services to here.
So the, so is that walking brothers room at New Tech? And that's the largest space? And I think we can accommodate as many people, nearly as many people as we had tonight in this space.
Okay.
And we've also hosted our new employee orientation there as well, where we have a pretty large audience or participant, so.
And, and it's a huge benefit to be able to let it stay set up so that you don't have to take it out every night. As you see, the tables are wearing by just them being in here when we're not here, and that's where it's stopped.
Okay.
The piece I think you need to look at that Dr. Whitaker was talking about irregular meetings be on the policy. It says that the superintendent should keep a schedule of the regular meetings. The regular meeting of the board shall be held on the second Tuesday of each month. When the second Tuesday falls on a holiday recognized by the board, the chair shall reschedule a meeting. So right now, we have two meetings a month. But this is saying that we are, our policy says one meeting a month. And it says that call work session are call meetings. Now, we can go to what we have that we're working on, but we probably need to make our policy work with what we are doing.
Alive, correct.
So if you want to have two meetings a month on the second and the fourth Tuesday, then our policy needs to write, and we only found that when we went to look at the changing of the location.
But I think you had kind of, you had alluded to that at one point, though.
Say that again.
I said, you, you made reference to that at one point before now.
I, I did, but only because I didn't understand my work, and I didn't know it was in policy. But call meetings are really, falls on the special. Am I right? Did I read that correctly?
Yes, ma'am. So, yes, ma'am, our work sessions, the work sessions or what the meeting like tonight is following on the specially called meetings. Yes, ma'am.
So, so you recommend that we change that so that it actually says our regular meetings are going to be the second and fourth, which is going to be business meeting and the work session?
It's up to you. If you want, if you think you can work with one meeting a month, because we have committee meetings and we work a lot out on committee meetings. So if you think one meeting a month is good, or if you think we need two meetings a month, you know, the first meeting is a, is our regular meeting where we approve things, and the second meeting of the month will always be a work session. But we just got to match what our policy is saying. We have to do what our policy is saying. So it's up to, that's totally up to you as a board. And it's not for action tonight. We're only giving it to you for information. And you might want to consult with the, the attorney about how the policy is written because right now, am I right?
I haven't really looked at that part, so I'll look at that and we can talk about it.
And so we'll wait, because we're not asking for any action tonight. We simply just wanted to bring it to your attention. And we wouldn't have found this if we weren't changing the place in here. So that's when we began to read it and say, ooh, it has some flaws into where we are working.
So typically, like when we have a policy review and we're changing one area, we review the whole policy in its entirety. If we see an area that needs to edit, then we bring it to your attention.
So if we were to move, is, are you proposing a timeline for that move? And if so, what do you need from us to make that happen?
We wanted you to think about it tonight, and we'll come back in February meeting for approval.
Okay.
Because we didn't want to put anything on you tonight to make a decision.
Okay.
So you'll have time to think about it, to discuss it.
That's correct. Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
And we're bringing it back to the February meeting for approval.
Okay.
So this is really a work session tonight, just to talk about and bringing it to your attention so you know in February, when we come back.
That's correct.
You will be coming back with.
I'll be bringing this back to you all again, once we've gotten the feedback through the office superintendent, when we're preparing another draft, as we consulted with attorney Mike, and we'll go from there. But we'll bring this back at the February meeting. This is just to share information so you all have it in advance for reflection and discussion.
One thing I, one thing I heard, I think, and I agree with, is just when we, when we revise the policy, we just don't need to put a location at all?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's one of the things we're proposing.
Okay.
And there are, and I think this is a conversation that's ongoing, but some boards will put a location, but they'll say will usually be held at this location, and that's how they deal with it in the policy.
Not so definitely.
So if, you know, the committee feels they want the location, they can just add the word usually, same with the time, which is still in there to give that flexibility.
Okay.
Yeah. Because you don't want to come back every time you change a location and adjust the policy.
Right, right. Especially since we posted it anyway.
Right.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, just to be clear, our next meeting is February 11th, and that meeting will take place here at Warren County Middle School.
Yes.
For our viewers.
Correct.
Will be the whole month of February here.
Okay.
We will probably move in March, that will give enough time for everything to be set up.
I just want to make sure our viewers.
And enough for the viewers to understand, too.
Okay.
I guess that's spelled correctly, right, Russ?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Whitaker.
All right, thank you, and thank you, Dr. Monique Davis, Ms. Peddaway, and Mr. Powell, who assisted in our research on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, but don't go too far. Now, I will discuss the review and proposed revisions for policy 2300.
We just did it. We went right into it.
Oh, that's what, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that was the number. I didn't bring it up. I think that's three strikes, I'm out.
Tonight's not your night.
Okay. At this point, I'd like to entertain a motion to convene into closed session.
I think Board Member Tally Brain is, is virtual, if you wanted to mention that.
Oh, we have Ms. Board Member Tally Brain is with us virtually at this point. Okay. All right, so, do I have a motion to convene into closed session?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we convene into closed session, recommend that the board convene in closed session to prevent disclosure of confidential information pursuant to General Statute 143-318, 11A, 1A5, and A6. General Statute 115C-319, and to consult with the board attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 143-318, 11A, and 11, 11A3.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Vice Chair Sims and a second by Board Member Long that we convene into closed session for said recommendation. If there's no further discussion, may we vote, as well as with the voting sound of aye?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. We will, let's see, what time is it? 7:14? 7:25. We will convene into closed session.
Okay, the board is back in open session. And at this point, we don't have to vote on anything. So I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Madam Chair, make a motion that we adjourn tonight's meeting?
Second. I have a motion by Vice Chair Simms and a second by Board Member Long that we adjourn tonight's meeting. Any further discussion? Hearing none, may we vote, as well as with the voting sound of aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Meeting adjourned.